Article 24.
Article 24. Article 24, proposed by the police chief.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to transfer from undesignated fund balance the sum of $80,000 to purchase and equip with miscellaneous police equipment, two new marked police vehicles for patrol use.
Do we have a second? We have a motion in a second to purchase two cruisers. Chief Brodick, could you come a little closer to the microphone, too, and explain your article?
Certainly.
Thank you.
This is in keeping with the overall plan that we have for the vehicles for the department. As you'll see in my next article that comes up, I'll explain a little bit more how this works out for the town. It is replacing two of the vehicles that need to be replaced. And again, it's keeping with the overall plan for the vehicles.
Okay, thank you. Finance Committee's recommendation, Article 24.
The Finance Committee recommends...
Finance Committee recommends. Any discussion on Article 24? Seeing no evidence thereof, all those in favor of Article 24 as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously.
Article 32.
Article 32. I'll give you a minute to catch up. It's proposed by the Municipal and School Building Committee. Mr. Elliott.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I move that the town vote to transfer from undesignated fund balance the sum of $12,500 to repair the chimneys on the following buildings: Museum of Halifax, Old Schoolhouse, Blacksmith Shop, and Pope's Tavern.
Do we have a second? Yes, we have a second. Mr. Garen, do you want to explain your article?
Some of the chimneys are really in desperate need of repair, pointing, capping, and things like that. We're just trying to maintain the chimneys before they fall.
Thank you. Finance Committee's recommendation, Article 32.
The Finance Committee recommends...
Finance Committee recommends. Any discussion on Article 32? Seeing no evidence thereof, all those in favor of Article 32 as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously.
Article 35.
Article 35 is proposed by Mr. Elliott. Municipal and School Building Committee, Article 35. Maybe Mr. Garen can help you out with the motion there.
Mr. Moderator, I'd like to move that the town vote to transfer from the solid waste retained earnings to the sum of $7,200 to replace the recycling centers, two rear garage doors with new hotware motors, one section, a panel with glass windows, and the other three sections of insulated solid panels.
Okay, we have a second? Yes? Yes, we have a motion in a second to transfer $7,200 to replace recycling center doors. Mr. Elliott.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Similar to the two doors we replaced, we don't have to raise the header on these two back doors. They're in bad condition. They need tracks, they need motors, they need springs, and a glass panel so the attendant can see what's going on in the back section of the building.
Okay, thank you. Finance Committee's recommendation, Article 35.
The Finance Committee recommends...
Finance Committee recommends. Any discussion on Article 35 as presented? Seeing no evidence thereof, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously.
Article 7.
Article 7. Article 7 is proposed by the Finance Committee. Mr. Andrews.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $75,000 to the reserve fund to cover extraordinary or unforeseen expenses during the fiscal year 2018 in accordance with Chapter 40, Section 6 of the Massachusetts General Laws, and to transfer from Water Department retained earnings, the sum of $50,000, to the Water Department Reserve Fund.
Okay, we have a second? Mr. Garen, please have a second. Yes, we have a motion in a second on Article 7. Finance Committee, Mr. Andrews, it's your motion.
So, this is the annual town article that allows the Finance Committee to create the reserve fund. Again, this year, we're requesting $75,000. And after meeting with the Water Department and our concerns with the wells, we felt it would make more sense to change the $25,000 to $50,000 for this upcoming fiscal year.
Okay, thank you. Finance Committee's article, so they recommend it. Any discussion on Article 7 as presented? Seeing...oh, I'm sorry, yes ma'am. Remember, holler out Mr. Moderator in case I don't look over.
Dot Lamoreau from 32 Parkwood Drive. Does that mean the 75 is added with the 50 to make like 125? Or is it 75 total?
Mr. Andrews.
So, the first $75,000 is to cover the whole town. The $50,000 is the Water Department, so that comes out of the water earnings. So, the $75,000 can be used for any department except for the Water Department. So, the Water Department has their own separate fund. Normally, that's funded at $25,000 over the previous number of years. And after meeting with the Water Department, we decided that this year, we would be more comfortable with a $50,000 reserve fund. The Water Department has not come for a reserve fund in a number of years that I've been on the board. With their upcoming project that they have, they have a plan coming forth, the Finance Committee felt that $50,000 for this year made sense.
So, there's two different funds. Okay, thank you.
Okay, any further discussion on Article 7? Seeing no evidence thereof, all those in favor of Article 7 as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously.
Article 49.
Article 49. Article 49 is proposed by the Board of Selectmen. Mrs. Roy.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to accept Chapter 64 and Section 3 of the Massachusetts General Laws and impose a 2% local sales tax on the total sales price received by the marijuana retailer as consideration for the sales of marijuana or marijuana products upon the sale or transfer of marijuana or marijuana products by a marijuana deal operating within a city or town to anyone or other than marijuana establishment.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second to accept Chapter 64 and Section 3. Mrs. Roy, do you want to explain your motion?
Yes, yes. So, the Town of Halifax supported question four at the ballot last November. And so, we have taken that as a sign that Halifax would not be opposed to a retail marijuana facility in our community. This article will allow us, if one should approach us, to charge a 2% local sales tax.
Finance Committee's recommendation on Article 49.
The Finance Committee recommends...
Finance Committee recommends. Any discussion on Article 49? Seeing no evidence thereof, all those in favor of Article 49 as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously.
Article 27.
Article 27. Article 27 proposed by the Fire Chief, Mrs. Roy.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town transfer from undesignated fund balance the sum of $10,000 to purchase new turnout gear for fire department personnel.
We have a motion in a second, Mr. Garen. Chief Faveros.
This is an article that comes up every year to replace turnout gear. NFPA 1851 requires that all turnout gear be taken out of service after 10 years. The average set of turnout gear costs approximately $3,300. We have 30 firefighters. If we replace with $10,000, we'll replace roughly three sets per year, and over 10...it gives us a 10-year replacement plan on turnout gear.
Okay, thank you. Finance Committee's recommendation.
The Finance Committee recommends...
Finance Committee recommends Article 27. Any discussion on Article 27 as proposed? Seeing no evidence thereof, all those in favor of Article 27, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously.
Article 47.
Article 47. Which is proposed by the Board of Selectmen or the Town Administrator. Mrs. Roy.
I move that the town vote to approve Article 47 as printed in the warrant.
Okay, do we have a second? We have a motion in a second to approve Article 47, which is amending the code of Halifax. And Mr. Sealy will speak to it.
If you notice, the last line between the current version and the proposed version is the difference. What this is, is clarifies that the legal ad is to be paid for by the petitioners, folks who are asking for the street to be accepted. That's the only difference between the two sections.
Finance Committee's recommendation, Article 47.
The Finance Committee recommends...
Finance Committee recommends. Any discussion on Article 47 as presented? Seeing no evidence thereof, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously.
Article 46.
Article 46. Article 46 is also proposed by the Board of Selectmen.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to approve Article 46 as printed in the warrant.
Thank you. We have a second. We have a motion in a second to approve Article 46, which is to amend the code of Halifax relating to licenses of delinquent taxpayers. Mr. Sealy.
Under our current bylaws, if someone is in arrears by more than 12 months for taxes and they have a license or permit that falls under this bylaw, the particular department or town official can either revoke or decide not to renew after notice to the license holder. They have to send it certified mail. There has to be a public hearing and such. All that has to happen. Everyone's given plenty of notice. But if they're in arrears by more than 12 months, that board or committee or town official can decide either not to renew, or not grant, or to revoke that license or permit. Under the change, the margin would be down to 30 days instead of 12 months. So, if someone was in arrears by more than 30 days, the same would apply. That said, it's not an automatic. In the case...if they have made an arrangement with the collector treasurer, either under the current bylaw or under the proposed bylaw, they've made an arrangement with the collector treasurer to go on a payment plan, and plenty of people do this, you can talk with the treasurer-collector about that, then the license still cannot be revoked, or they can get their permit and such. What this simply changes is that the amount of time they can be in arrears instead of 12 months is 30 days. The notices still have to happen, the hearings still have to happen, all that has to happen. It's simply a change in timing.
Finance Committee's recommendation, Article 46.
The Finance Committee recommends...
Finance Committee recommends. Any discussion on Article 46 as presented? Seeing no evidence thereof, all those in favor of Article 46, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Article 46 passes unanimously.
Article 38.
Article 38. Article 38 is also proposed by the Board of Selectmen. Mrs. Roy.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from Waterways Fund the sum of $5,000 for improvements to the town boat ramp on East Bon pont de Pond.
Okay, do we have a second? We have a motion in a second to appropriate...I'm sorry, transfer from Waterways Fund, $5,000.
I can do it.
Mrs. Roy.
This article will fund, as it says, improvements for the town's boat ramp that is right on Route 36.
Okay, Finance Committee's recommendation, Article 38.
The Finance Committee recommends...
Finance Committee recommends. Any discussion on Article 38 as presented? Seeing no evidence thereof, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously.
Article 16. 16, 1/6.
Article 16. Article 16 is proposed...
Mr. Moderator, the highway surveyor could not be here, so he's asked me to present his articles.
I'm sorry.
The highway surveyor could not be here, so I am presenting his articles.
Okay.
I move that the town vote to transfer from available funds the sum of $0 to meet the town's share and to appropriate the sum of $269,658 from available funds under Chapter 10 of the Acts of 2017 as the state's share of the cost of work under Chapter 90, Section 34 2A of the Massachusetts General Laws. For the purpose...oh, we're not passing over it. We're funding it, yeah, sorry. No, we...our portion is zero, but we're accepting 269. Where did I leave off? Okay. For the purpose set forth in a memorandum of agreement with the Massachusetts Highway Department, including maintaining, repairing, improving, and constructing town and country ways and bridges, sidewalks adjacent to said ways and bridges, bikeways, and other projects eligible for funding as the Transportation Enhancement Project as described in the Intermodal Surface Transportation Efficiency Act of 1991, PL 102-240, salt storage sheds, public use, off-street parking facilities related to mass transportation, for engineering services and expenses related to highway transportation enhancement and mass transportation purposes, for care, repair, storage, purchase, and long-term leasing of road-building machinery, equipment, and tools, and for the erection and maintenance of directional signs and warning signs, or take any action thereon.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Mr. Milias? Yes, we have a motion in a second for Article 16 as proposed. Mrs. Roy, do you want to speak to it?
Yes, this is an article that we have every year, and this article is needed so that we can accept Chapter 90 funds from the state to provide, maintain, and improve our roads.
Okay. Finance Committee's recommendation, Article 16.
The Finance Committee recommends...
Finance Committee recommends. Any discussion on Article 16? Seeing no evidence thereof, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously.
Article 17.
Article 17. Also a highway article. Mrs. Roy.
Article 17. I move that the town vote to transfer from undesignated fund balance the sum of $150,000 for the maintenance of town roads.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to transfer money for maintenance of town roads. Mrs. Roy.
This article funds maintenance for town roads, and the newly-elected highway surveyor will be responsible to designate how these funds will be spent.
Okay, thank you. Finance Committee's recommendation, Article 17.
The Finance Committee recommends...
Finance Committee recommends. Any discussion, Article 17? Seeing no evidence thereof, all those in favor of Article 17 as proposed, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously.
36.
Article 36. Article 36, Mr. Chavone, proposed by the Board of Assessors.
Yes, John Chavone, Board of Assessors. I move that the town vote to transfer from undesignated fund balance the sum of $12,000 to the Assessor's Triannual Evaluation Account.
Okay, we have a second? Yes, we have a motion in a second to transfer $12,000. It's your article, Mr. Chavone. Do you want to speak to it?
Yes, this article comes up every year. It funds the triannual account in...it's done every three years on a yearly basis.
Okay, thank you. Finance Committee's recommendation, Article 36.
The Finance Committee recommends...
Finance Committee recommends. Any discussion on Article 36 as presented? Seeing no evidence thereof, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously.
Article 31.
Article 31. Board of Selectmen, want to make the motion for the Fire Chief?
I move that the town vote to transfer from undesignated fund balance the sum of $10,000 to purchase IV pumps for the Halifax Fire Department.
Do we have a second? We have a motion in a second to transfer $10,000. Chief?
The Massachusetts Office of Emergency Medical Services a year ago issued a requirement that all ALS ambulances carry IV infusion pumps, and that they have them in place no later than December 31, 2017.
Okay, thank you. Finance Committee's recommendation, Article 31.
The Finance Committee recommends...
Finance Committee recommends. Any further discussion on Article 31? Seeing no evidence thereof, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously.
28.
Article 28. 28. Is Board of Selectmen, please?
I move that the town vote to transfer from undesignated fund balance the sum of $280,000 to purchase and equip an ambulance for the fire department.
Do we have a second? We have a motion in a second to buy a new ambulance. Fire Chief?
The ambulance that's being replaced is a 2008. It currently has 111,000 miles. On two occasions in the past six months, we've had the ambulance break down while transporting patients to a hospital. We've actually had to respond with another ambulance and move the patient over and then continue the transport. This particular ambulance over the past year has been one of the largest issues with our vehicle maintenance budget. We've spent over $4,000 just in the past two months to keep it on the road. If approved, the estimated delivery time from the vendor is 240 days, so we can expect it sometime probably in January. The $280,000 includes equipping the ambulances with new radios and a power-load stretcher system. And prices of ambulances have dramatically increased over the past couple of years, and that's mostly due to new NFPA and Triple K standards for...safety standards for ambulances.
Okay, thank you. Finance Committee's recommendation, Article 28.
The Finance Committee recommends...
Finance Committee recommends. Any discussion on Article 28 as presented? Yes, sir.
If the fire department already has trouble parking the two fire trucks, two ambulances already in the station, why do we need a third one? And second of all, what is the...what is the total cost of maintenance for the last fiscal year on that ambulance? It only have 108,000 miles. I regularly get $200,000 out of my vehicles.
I'll see if I can get an answer for you. Please have a seat. Chief?
We're replacing an ambulance, so we have two ambulances now, and we'll continue to have only two ambulances. This...the ambulance that we're getting rid of will be traded in, and the $280,000 included that trade-in value. As to your question about how much exactly that particular ambulance cost in the last year, I don't have that number readily available. I only...but I can tell you, in the past two months, it's cost us $4,000 to keep on the road.
Any further discussion on Article 28 as presented? Yes, sir?
If the maintenance on the vehicle is only $8,000 for the last two months, even...
Please address me if you would.
Even putting that amount of money over a whole year would still only be $44,000 as opposed to $280,000. I think the town would be better off saving the money for something else that would cost a lot less money.
All right, thank you. Chief, if you'd like to, you can...
While the maintenance cost has been an issue for us, the greater issue is that the ambulance has...now has 111,000. By the time we do receive its replacement, it'll be over 10 years old and have between 100...we're estimating between 125 and 130,000 miles on it. While the maintenance budget is one aspect of it, the greater concern is the, you know, the breakdowns with this particular ambulance become more frequent, and it's not something that we want to gamble with, especially when we're transporting patients to the hospital. Like I said, we've already had it happen twice this year where we've had the ambulance break down while transporting a patient.
Any further discussion on Article 28 as presented? Seeing no evidence thereof, all those in favor of Article 28, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously.
Article 43.
Article 43. Proposed by the Treasurer Collector.
I move the town vote to transfer from Water Department retained earnings, the sum of $70,000 for the second-year principal payment of the water tower painting and repair debt, and $5,985 for the second year of interest on the same debt, for a total of $75,985, and that a new line item be established for this purpose as part of the town's operating budget.
Okay, do we have a second? We have a motion in a second to transfer money for water tower painting. It's your article. Would you like to speak to it?
This is just the payment on the band for the water tower.
All right, thank you. Finance Committee's recommendation on Article 43.
The Finance Committee recommends...
Finance Committee recommends. Any discussion on Article 43? Seeing no evidence thereof, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously.
Article 14.
Article 14, 1/4. Article 14 is proposed by the Board of Selectmen.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate $6,403 to fund the provisions of the collective bargaining agreement for fiscal 2018 between Fire Chief Jason Faveros and the Town of Halifax.
We have a second? We have a motion in a second to raise and appropriate $6,403. Mrs. Roy.
As part of the contract negotiation, a salary comparison was conducted using towns of similar population, budget, per capita income, and commercial base to ensure that we were within the proper salary range for our Fire Chief. What we learned is that the average Fire Chief is being paid $114,000 per year. We recognized that funds are limited, but wanted to place the salary closer to the average. This contract will place the chief's base salary at $104,000 per year. We are requesting an additional $1,000 for his paramedic stipend. The annual stipend will be $6,000. Our firefighters can receive up to $7,000 for their paramedic license. Because we have limited staff, our Fire Chief often uses his paramedic license on medical cause, and we feel it is fair to pay him the stipend. The Fire Chief, in addition to his chief duties, is also our emergency management director. Chief Faveros has done a tremendous job with not only the running of the day-to-day operations of our fire department, but also by being so proactive and obtaining much-needed grant money. These grants have saved the taxpayers of Halifax hundreds of thousands of dollars. He obtained a grant for $714,000 to purchase our tower truck, and a $60,000 grant to purchase portable radios. In addition to these grants, he has obtained many small grants that have covered the cost of much-needed items. Chief Faveros has implemented a staffing plan that has significantly improved response times and has decreased our dependence on mutual aid. This cost was offset by ambulance revenues and not our tax dollars. Chief Faveros has consistently gone above and beyond the call of duty, and he has...we as a community are grateful for all that he has done, and he will continue to do for our town. We feel that this is a fair wage when we balance what the average salary is and what we know we can afford.
Okay, Finance Committee's recommendation, Article 14.
The Finance Committee recommends...
Finance Committee recommends. Any discussion on Article 14? Seeing no evidence thereof, all those in favor of Article 14 as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously.
Article 10.
Article 10. Article 10 is proposed by the Board of Selectmen.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $6,719 to fund the provisions of the collective bargaining agreement for fiscal year 2018 between AFSCME, AFVL, CIO, Union Council 93, Local 1700, Highway Cemetery, and the Town of Halifax.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a motion in a second to raise and appropriate $6,719. Mr. Milias, it's your article.
Mr. Moderator, this is to satisfy the terms of the negotiation with the local, and it represents the same 2% that we've already passed and granted for all our other employees.
Thank you. Finance Committee's recommendation, Article 10.
The Finance Committee recommends...
Finance Committee recommends Article 10. All...is there any further discussion on Article 10 as presented? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously.
Article 6.
Article 6. Article 6 is proposed by the Board of Selectmen. Mrs. Roy.
Mr. Moderator, I move the article presented in the warrant.
Okay, do we have a second? We have a motion in a second to amend the code of Halifax by adding a new section permanently establishing a revolving fund. Mr. Sealy or Mrs. Roy? Mr. Selig or Mrs. Roy?
Each year, traditionally on Article 5, we have a revolving fund list, and we have to approve that each year. What Article 6 does is eliminate the annual process of renewing the revolving funds. It establishes a bylaw with the same type of chart that you see for Article 5. It'll be in Article 6, and therefore, we won't have to come back to town meeting every year. If there are additional funds that need to be added and such, we'll have to come back, but otherwise, we won't have to go through this article every year. We won't have to go through Article 5. We're dealing with Article 6, which is a new bylaw.
Thank you. Finance Committee's recommendation, Article 6.
The Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee recommends. Any discussion on Article 6? Seeing no evidence thereof, all those in favor of Article 6 as presented say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously.
Article 18.
Article 18. Article 18, Highway, Mrs. Roy.
Yes. Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to transfer from undesignated fund balance the sum of $205,000 to purchase and equip a large dump truck for the Highway Department.
We have a second. Yes, we have a second. Mrs. Roy, it's your article.
Okay, I'm going to do my best to present this article again. The Highway Surveyor could not be here, so this is the information that I had asked him. This article will fund the replacement of a 1987 L-8,003-ton large dump truck that is used to plow, sand, and haul asphalt, gravel, and other debris. The truck that we are replacing is in poor condition, has severe rot, and has become unsafe to drive. When this article was printed, we did not have a solid number. We have since received one quote for $188,000. We are still requesting the $205,000 in order to have a contingency for any added equipment that may be needed on the truck. The new Highway Surveyor will make the final choice on the model, style, brand, and accessories. Any funds that are not spent from this article will be left unspent and used for future articles next year.
Okay. Finance Committee's recommendation on Article 18.
The Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee recommends. Any discussion? Yes, sir. Come on up to the front.
Dave Rossini, 6 Deer Run Road. So basically, we don't have a lot of information on the type of vehicle that we're going to buy. We only have one quote.
You'll have a seat. I'll try and find out for you, please.
It just seems like a lot of money for a truck we're not really sure of. I think we'd like to have a little more information before we okay that kind of money.
Oh, yeah. We'll find out for you. Thank you.
So the Highway Surveyor was able to provide with me the one quote that he had received so far, and that was for a Freightliner 108 SD, $37,600. Again, I think when he presented this request to the Capital Planning Committee, he did talk a lot about the condition of that 1987 truck and a lot about the plowing, the needs of the town when it comes to that particular vehicle and the size of that vehicle, that this particular vehicle can plow double the amount of sand than the next size down. And again, I will remind town meeting that when the newly-elected Highway Surveyor starts looking at all the quotes that are coming in, this is the most that he can spend for this truck. Any unspent money will be returned to the town to be spent the following year, and those funds would then need to be re-approved by this body in order to be spent.
Yeah, then we'll come back to you. Yep, on the end here. Right there. Yep. I can't remember everybody's names, so I apologize for that.
Kurt Betts, 75 Haywood Street. I'd like to have this tabled until the town surveyor is able to come here with some definitive answers on the price, size, availability of this vehicle and other quotes.
Okay. Mrs. Roy.
The only problem with that is it really is a much-needed piece of equipment, and we don't hold town meeting that often. And so, again, it's a 1987. It's got severe rot. I think the windows don't go down. One of the doors doesn't open. And again, we've put this purchase off. It's been part of the capital plan, and really, we're at a point where we need to purchase it. But we can assure you that your choice at the polls, the new Highway Surveyor, will be vetting every single one of these quotes and choosing the right vehicle for the department.
Okay. Let me get another question in. Yes, sir.
Dave Rossini, 6 Deer Run Road. I think we should table this until we have more information on exactly the different vehicles we're going to get, because the last time I got into it with the Highway Surveyor was basically, he looked at one thing. That's what he wanted, and that's what the taxpayers paid for. But I think we need to look at more reasonably-priced options than just one quote right now. We're basically saying, all right, we're going to give you this much money, and it's too late. We can't say anything after we give you the money. I want to know what we're spending the money on. I know it's a truck that needs to be replaced, but if it needed to be replaced that bad, we would have done a lot more work to figure out exactly what we needed before we came to town meeting and just said, "Give us your money."
Okay, thank you. Mr. Selig.
I understand the reluctance for many of the residents here about, in essence, signing a blank check for a truck that they don't know which particular make and model is going to be purchased. The challenge for us is that we have an outgoing Highway Surveyor who is doing his due diligence, bringing the matter to the Capital Planning Committee, bringing it to the Finance Committee, and indicating the need for the replacement of the '87 truck. However, he's not going to be Highway Surveyor when the money becomes available on July 1st. Someone else will. But that person's going to have the same need to go out and buy that truck, whatever truck it is. We can't be definitive about which truck each of these individuals will want because we don't know who is going to be elected. But we do want to set aside this money for this replacement. Obviously, you can talk to the candidates if you want. Not right now, but later on during the week, and ask them what their intent would be to, in fact, use this money. That's as far as we can go. We just can't give you a definitive answer right now because we don't know who's going to be making the decision.
Any further discussion? Mrs. Hanson hasn't had a shot at this, and then we'll come back to you guys.
Mr. Moderator, obviously, I've been here too long, if you remember my name. I have a question about the condition of the 1987.
You're making me look bad in front of everybody else.
No, I'm just a little bit more vocal than the average person here, I guess. The 1987 truck, I'm not that familiar, but it's the big dump truck, correct? Is it usable? I don't want another storm like we've... Winter like we had a few years ago and not be able to plow the town roads. So I'd like to know if the truck is actually usable and what's the maintenance on it right now? If it's going to... Because I don't know if we're going to make it to another town meeting before the winter.
We'll try and find out. Does anyone know if the truck is usable? Mrs. Roy?
I can...
No, no, I was just going to ask anybody from Highway.
Is there anybody from Highway here? Did you want to speak to it?
Mr. Hayward. Mr. Hayward, be able to answer that question, perhaps?
Steve Hayward, Furnace Street.
Come a little closer so we can all hear.
Now, can you hear me? The truck is a 1987. It's no... There's all rot. The doors don't open. You can't plow with it half the time because it's broken down. Basically, that's all I can tell you.
I think the question was, is it usable? Can you use it now?
We shouldn't be using it because it's not safe.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir. I'll get you in the back there. Thank you.
I'd like to know if the vehicle is currently registered and has an inspection sticker from the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and also other maintenance records for this vehicle. Before you spend $200,000 on another vehicle, we should find out what the actual condition is. And I'd like to make a motion to table this until we have more answers.
I've already thought about the motion to table, not in this context, but in another. And I would rule any motion to table out of order. And it's for this reason. Under our lottery bylaw, we are supposed to take things up in order. So if we table something, that changes the order, so I'm not going to allow that. But you're certainly entitled to vote yes or no on this article, which, in effect, will either kill it this year, and they can bring it up again, or it'll pass and it'll be paid for. So now, before I get to you, I have one in the back. He was... And then, you're right after him. Thank you. I understand the question there about motioning the table, that you want more information. But the way the bylaw is constructed, I don't think that's an appropriate motion. And it's up to the people bringing the motion to the floor to have that information for you. Yes, sir.
Jared Smaller, 34 Lawrence Road. Two parts to what I had to say. Short of anybody with a classic or antique car, how many people in this room drive a car that's 30 years old? We don't... We shouldn't expect that of the municipal workers that clear the roads and do this work for us. Secondly, to the previous speaker who commented on basically a blank check, Chapter 30B of Mass General Law is the procurement law. They can't just buy whatever. They have to go through a bidding process.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir?
I fix trucks and heavy equipment for a living, okay? As a mechanic, when I'm looking at this stuff, I can see how bad something is, make recommendations to my boss on vehicle purchases. I don't wait until the truck is unusable before I say, "Hey, I think we need something new." That's what I'm saying. It shouldn't have come to this point where it's, "You want the money right now or else." And I don't get this. I mean, they should have seen this coming. We should have made some sort of plans instead of getting hit with a big bill like this. I just don't understand how you can expect me to just give you the money. And to the previous speaker, it's not a blank check. I understand that. But once we approve this, I have no say. I'm done. You guys, or the Highway Surveyor, whoever it may be, he can do what he wants with it. But right now, this is the only time I can say or do anything about it. And I just don't see how I can justify paying that kind of money. You guys, I'm not even going to be able to live in this town much longer because of all these expenditures. I don't get pay raises every year. I laugh when I come here with these 2% raises.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Roy, you had your hand up?
Mark Roy, 473 Plymouth Street. Why not just allocate the money of $200,000? Because they will be required to have three bids. There will be a minimum of three bids. So the new surveyor will just have to dictate the type of vehicle he wants with the specifications, three bids at minimum, and the number will be right. If the number goes over 200, they can't... It's not a... The bid's not accepted.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion?
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Andrews.
I would just like to point out to the town body that the capital plan is a five-year to 10-year plan. And this isn't just the first year that it's been on the capital plan, but it's the first year it's come before the town meeting where we have a chance at financing and purchasing the vehicle or any other thing that's come before you in an article. There's a capital plan that's been put in place. I know that that truck was on the plan for last year, but because we didn't have the funds to pay for it, it didn't come before the body. I don't want the body to think that just because it's here for the first time you're seeing it, it's the first time that the town's looked at the issue.
Any further discussion on Article 18? Okay. Seeing no evidence thereof, all those in favor of Article 18 as presented say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Moderators in doubt, we're going to need to count. We'll have to take a standing count. We're about to take a standing vote. In order for this vote to be accurate, I need to have all of the non-town meeting members, aside from the video people over here, and everyone else has to please take a seat. There are seats up front if you need it, but I have to have everyone sitting down before we start the vote so that we can make an accurate count. So when everyone's seated, we'll begin. Okay. So all those in favor of Article 18 as presented, please stand and remain standing. All right, if everyone would please be seated. Those... Everyone seated, thank you. Those opposed to Article 18 as presented, please stand and remain standing. Of those present and voting, 133 yes, 44 no. The motion passes by majority. Moving on to the next article.
Next article is 22.
Article 22. Okay. Article 22 is, I believe, inextricably tied into Article 21, so we will move to Article 21. That has to be decided before Article 22. Article 21. We're dealing with Article 21. Municipal and School Building Committee, Mr. Campbell.
and appropriate an additional amount of $1,897.48 for a total of $2 million to be expended under direction of Halifax Municipal School Building Committee for repairs, renovations, expansion to Pope's Tavern, including the building associated infrastructure and grounds located at 506 Plymouth Street, including but not limited to any architectural, engineering, and administrative work associated with this project, including the payment of all costs incidental and related heretofore. In that, to meet this appropriation, Town Treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectment, is authorized to borrow set amount under MGL Chapter 44 pursuant to any other enabling authority.
Thank you. Do we have a second? We have a motion in a second to essentially appropriate $2 million. Because you're asking for borrowing, this will require a two-thirds vote. Mr. Campbell, it's your motion. Would you like to speak to it?
Yes. This project has been ongoing for the last 12 to 15 years. We've brought proposals to the town meeting before and have been defeated. We have had four different architects try to redesign this building or work on a new building. This particular architectural firm has put together a project which, in our opinion, is the best that we've seen out of all the architects. We're going to put an addition on the back of Pope's Tavern. You all have that little booklet that got mailed to you. From the front of Pope's Tavern, you won't even recognize that the addition is put on here. The addition put on the back is going to have a full cellar. The first floor will be one large room, and the second floor will be a little smaller room because of the roof configurations. And the kitchen off to the side. All those rooms and the kitchen will be available to any other group in town. There's been a shortage of meeting place, so the selectmen have asked us to do that. So, but those spaces will be available to anybody. And also, there's an elevator that will be in the new section of the building that will make all three floors accessible. The old portion of Pope's Tavern, which is being used now, is completely unusable, handicap-accessible building. All the hallways, all the doors are too small. So on the first floor, we reconfigured it around so that we have three big rooms and two smaller rooms with two bathrooms. On the second floor, it was a mishmash of smaller rooms, and to make that handicap accessible, we made three big rooms and two smaller rooms, which will be private interviewing places and exam rooms, so that they don't have to use the bathroom anymore for medical purposes. And the, and that pretty much covers it. The plot plan of this building is the smallest plot plan in area, but it is the biggest usable area on the inside of the building that we've come up with in the last 10 years. I hope the town will put us forward and speak about it, and if there's any questions, I'd like to move.
Okay, thank you. Finance Committee's recommendation on Article 21.
The Finance Committee recommends...
Finance Committee recommends. Any discussion on Article 21? Seeing no evidence thereof, oh, I'm sorry, over here, yep. You gotta holler loud. I'll get to you next. I gotta go first. Call out Mr. Moderator, so I can hear you.
Hi, I'm Kathy Abraze from Brandeis Circle, and I have, had never been into the senior center until I retired. I'm a retired RN, and when I went in there, I was a little shocked that the floors are unlevel, the rooms are very tiny, and there are a couple classes that are held on the second floor. There is no elevator access. The stairs, as you can imagine, in a very old building are very, very steep. I have witnessed women going up there with canes, coming down with canes, and it scares me to death. When we have lunches for seniors, the rooms of, the room that is used is very, very crowded, and it's very difficult to get in and out. And I think, being a longtime resident here, that it is time to have the seniors go someplace where they're comfortable, so that they're not sitting in their homes, and can enjoy each other. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yes, sir, over here, yep?
Name is John Greveney from 98 Clyde O'Barrowworth Road. My question is, along with this addition, isn't there supposed to be so many parking spots for all this building?
Okay, you want to know about the parking for the building?
I want to know what kind of parking we're supposed to have.
If you'll have a seat, I'll try to get you an answer. Mr. Campbell, can you answer that?
As the building stands now, and it's right next to the water department, there is a little parking shortage. We're hoping to get about 30 parking spaces, using the front yard and making the backyard a little larger. And in fact, this design only took four parking spaces away, so that it's very good. We hope to get 30 spaces, and that will take the everyday use of the building. And say there's a banquet with 60 or 70 people in the big room, there'll be a parking problem then, and they'll probably have to park at the town hall or the lobby parking lot.
Okay. Any further discussion on Article 21 as presented? Yes, sir?
My name's Kurt Betcher, and I'm also a senior citizen. I'm 61 years old, and I don't want to fund any more money for any other projects or anything. I have limited income. This will add at least another, probably $1,000 to my tax bill every year.
Okay, thank you. Yes, ma'am, in the back?
Lori Costa-Klein, 285 South Street. So I started getting involved with town meeting when the all-seasons bid came up. And at the time, that was a really tough time for our town. I'm just gonna say something that I feel strongly about at this point. I think that many people from my generation were accused of not being pro seniors at that time, that we didn't respect, that they needed this and they deserved this. And I think that many of us who voted against that project felt that it wasn't the right project, wasn't the right amount of money. It took money out of our tax rolls, from business revenue, and it didn't have an answer for an existing building. What are we going to do with that, and how is that going to be maintained? Since that vote came up at town meeting a few years back, I've taken some time to get to know what's happening at the senior center. I've looked at the plans. I'm just one person, but speaking as a taxpayer who is very limited in my income, who struggles to pay my bills, who is voting for school projects, I think this is a good project. I think it's time that we put the money towards this project. I think it's well thought out. Will it be difficult for us to fund? Yes. It might be difficult, but I do think it is a reasonable project. We can afford it. I can afford it. I might make, do a little less for my family, but I would be willing to vote yes for this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion on Article 21?
Mr. Moderator?
Mr. Andrews?
So this is being proposed to be within the levy limit, so there is no debt exclusion to go along with this project. The estimated first-year payment will be approximately $65.78 on the average home. So that payment will not take place until more than likely the FY18, sorry, the upcoming year that we're voting on now is FY18. The following year of FY19 is probably when you will see this increase take place in your tax bill. So you will not see an implication from this vote tonight on your upcoming tax bill.
Any further discussion on Article 21? Yes, ma'am?
Joy Marble from Wood Street. I just wanted to say that this project isn't just for the seniors. I don't know if, how many people went to the open house and that sort of thing, but it is a community center as well. So there is a shut-off where it's locked down, and the community can use it for banquets and Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts and all that kind of stuff. So it's not just for the seniors. We've gone through this project over and over again, spent a lot of money on architects that has gone, you know, we've lost. And I think this is like, so needed, not just for the seniors, but for the town as a community, and I think it's the best thing that we've had so far.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion on Article 21? Seeing, yes, ma'am?
Karen Farrell, 15 Clyde O'Barrowworth. I just have a question on the amount. That's $65.78 per year, just one payment for the year.
I think there was a question. Mr. Andrews, do you want to answer that?
Yes, so that would be, just on the average home, which is approximately $300,000, the first-year payment would be $65.78, and that would be within the tax levy. So it's not above like the school roof siding and windows project that was just voted in.
Any further discussion on Article 21? Seeing no evidence thereof. This requires a two-thirds vote, because it would require the town to borrow, as is proposed in the motion. Moderator will try to hear a two-thirds vote. If I don't, we'll do a standing count. All those in favor of Article 21 as presented, please say aye.
Aye!
Opposed?
No!
Moderator hears a two-thirds vote. Motion passes. Moving on to Article 22. Moving on to Article 22. 22.
Mr. Moderator, I would move to pass over Article 22.
We have a second to pass over 22. Yes, we have a motion in a second to pass over Article 22.
This article is no longer needed.
Okay. Finance Committee's recommendation, passing over Article 22?
The Finance Committee recommends...
Finance Committee recommends. We're being asked not to take any action on Article 22. I think that's because of the vote that you just took on Article 21. All those in favor of passing over Article 22, please say aye.
Aye!
Opposed? Passes unanimously.
Article 5.
Article 5. Article 5 is proposed by, I believe, the Board of Selectmen, Finance Committee, I'm sorry.
Mr. Moderator, I would move as presented in the warrant.
Okay, we have a second. Mr. Garen, yes, we have a motion in a second to approve Article 5 as presented in the warrant. This is to vote to continue revolving accounts. Mr. Andrews, it's your motion.
So as the town administrator previously said on Article 6, what we're doing with Article 5 is setting the annual revolving funds for all these, all the different, all the different revolving funds, and setting aside the amount to spend, the revenue source, the use of the fund, and the spending limit.
Okay, since it's the Finance Committee's article, they recommend it. Any discussion on Article 5? Seeing no evidence thereof, please, anyone in favor, please say aye.
Aye!
Opposed? Passes unanimously.
Article 9.
Article 9. Article 9 is proposed by the Board of Selectmen. Mr. Millius?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate $303 to fund the provisions of the collective bargaining agreement for fiscal year 2018 between AFS, CME, AFVL, CIO, Union Council 93, Local 1700, dispatchers, and the town of Halifax.
We have a second. We have a motion in a second to raise and appropriate $303 to fund the collective bargaining. Mr. Millius, it's your art, your warrant, your article, sorry.
Mr. Moderator, this again represents a negotiated contract with the one remaining dispatch person who will be retiring in August, and this just satisfies, for the short time, the 2% that everyone else received.
Okay, Finance Committee's recommendation.
The Finance Committee recommends...
Finance Committee recommends. Any discussion on Article 9 as presented? Seeing no evidence thereof, all those in favor of Article 9 as presented, say aye. Opposed? Passes unanimously.
Article 20.
Article 20. Proposed by the Board of Selectmen. Mr. Garen?
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $50,000 to be expended under the direction of the Halifax School Committee for repairs and renovation to the Halifax Elementary School located at 464 Plymouth Street, including but not limited to the security system, including but not limited to any architectural, engineering, and administrative work associated with this project.
Okay, we have a second. We have a motion in a second to approve Article 20. Mr. Garen, it's your article?
The article itself is to set up architectural, engineering, and administrative associated to put the building on their better repairs, as it is now.
Okay. Finance Committee's recommendation, Article 20.
The Finance Committee recommends...
Finance Committee recommends. Any discussion on Article 20 as presented? Seeing no evidence thereof, all those in favor of Article 20, say aye.
Aye!
Opposed? Passes unanimously.
Article 26.
Article 26. Board of Selectmen and the Fire Chief.
I moved at the town vote to transfer from undesignated fund balance the sum of $5,000 to purchase and maintain communications equipment for the fire department.
We have a second. We have a motion in a second to purchase equipment for the fire department chief.
This article is to purchase and maintain our radio equipment. We have, we've used this money primarily to replace and repair broken pages, portable radios, mobile radios, any work that needs to be done on our repeater system and in tenants. So it's mostly a maintenance item.
Okay, thank you. Finance Committee's recommendation, Article 26?
The Finance Committee recommends...
Finance Committee recommends. Any discussion on Article 26? Seeing no evidence thereof, all those in favor of Article 26 as presented, say aye.
Aye!
Opposed? Passes unanimously.
Article 37.
Article 37. Proposed by the Conservation Commission.
Mr. Moderator? Is there any, I'll move it. I move that the town vote to transfer from wetland funds the sum of $7,500 for additional hours for the Conservation Commission's secretary for wetlands protection work and review.
We have a second. A motion in a second to transfer money for the secretary. Mrs. Roy?
Actually, this article will also fund, whenever we would need an independent conservation agent to evaluate a property. Many years ago, we reduced that position, the Conservation Commission, I mean, agent. And what we've done in years past is we've had this article, and we've funded some of the administration hours, because that particular role is taking on more responsibility, and then we have funds available whenever we need to use an independent conservation agent. We found that this has been a cost savings for the town to structure the department in this way.
Thank you. Finance Committee's recommendation, Article 37?
The Finance Committee recommends...
Finance Committee recommends. Any discussion on Article 37 as presented? Seeing no evidence thereof, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye!
Opposed? Passes unanimously.
19.
Article 19.
Is... Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate the amount of $977,000 for additional hours for the Conservation Commission's secretary for wetlands protection work and review.
We have a second. A motion in a second to transfer money for the secretary. Mrs. Roy?
Actually, this article will also fund, whenever we would need an independent conservation agent to evaluate a property. Many years ago, we reduced that position, the Conservation Commission, I mean, agent. And what we've done in years past is we've had this article, and we've funded some of the administration hours, because that particular role is taking on more responsibility, and then we have funds available whenever we need to use an independent conservation agent. We found that this has been a cost savings for the town to structure the department in this way.
Thank you. Finance Committee's recommendation, Article 37?
The Finance Committee recommends...
Finance Committee recommends. Any discussion on Article 37 as presented? Seeing no evidence thereof, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye!
Opposed? Passes unanimously.
19.
Article 19.
Is... Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to appropriate the amount of $977,000 Mr. Moderator, I moved that the town vote to appropriate the amount of $977,000 to be expended under the direction of the Halifax School Building Committee for repairs and renovations to the Halifax Elementary School located at 464 Plymouth Street, including but not limited to the fire suppression system, including but not limited to any architectural, engineering, administrative work associated with this project. And including the payment of all costs incidental or related thereto, and that to meet this appropriation, the town treasurer, with the approval of the Board of Selectmen, is authorized to borrow said amount under Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44, or pursuant to any other enabling authority.
We have a motion and a second to appropriate $977,000. Mr. Millius, it's your article.
This town meeting has been asked to do a lot of things tonight, and unfortunately, they're all expensive. I got to present this article because at the special town meeting in March, I moved to pass over this article because when I saw the numbers that we're talking about for the fire suppression system, I was taken aback. We've taken a good hard look at this, and the bottom line and the reality of it is, under the system we have to do things, this was the best price we could get. The current system, of the way the school's now set up, the new section of the school has fire suppression. Unfortunately, it's no longer functioning properly. We have leaks, we're constantly battling it. We were hoping to be able to resurrect it and then add to the old section of the building, but that just couldn't happen. It is far more cost effective to take it out and put in a whole new system, as awful as that sounds. This is what it's going to take, this is what we need. We've already appropriated a lot of money for the renovation of the school, this is another chapter of that. We're going to do this a little differently in terms of financing, and I can let the Finance Committee speak to that portion of it.
Finance Committee's recommendation on Article 19.
The Finance Committee recommends.
You want to speak to it?
Yes, Ms. Moderator. So the Finance Committee asks that this borrowing take place within the levy again so that we do not have a debt exclusion on top. This again, if the work is completed this year, which I'm not sure that it takes, if everything's completed this year or not, it won't be in this upcoming year's tax bill. It'll be in the following year's tax bill. So you will see this cost on that tax bill, and it will fit within the levy. So previously, the number that we discussed, lost my paper here. So previously, with our recommendations and what's happened at town meeting, we had an approximate excess capacity, which means that we didn't tax to the levy limit. We are looking at $571,699. So this will fit, this project, the first year payment and the preceding payments will fit within the levy.
Okay, any discussion on Article 19? Article 19 is requesting the town borrow. Because it's a borrowing, we'll have to have a two-thirds vote. Moderator will try to hear the two-thirds vote. If that is unsuccessful, we'll do a standing vote. All those in favor of Article 19 as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes, passes by two-thirds majority. Next article.
Article 11.
Article 11. Article 11 is proposed by the Board of Selectmen. Mr. Garen.
Mr. Moderator, I moved at the town vote to raise and appropriate $6,616 to fund the provisions of the collective bargaining agreement for fiscal year 2018 between Mass. Cops, Local 449, Sergeants in the Town of Halifax.
We have a second? Yes, we have a motion and a second to approve $6,616 under Article 11. Mr. Garen, it's your motion.
After much negotiating, we came to an agreement that $6,000 would carry over the 2% that other employees have received this year, as well as negotiating just wages of this year.
Okay, Finance Committee's recommendation, Article 11.
The Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee recommends. Any discussion on Article 11? Seeing no evidence thereof, all those in favor of Article 11 as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously.
39.
39.
39.
Article 39. Proposed by the Municipal and School Building Committee, Mr. Elliott.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I moved at the town vote to transfer from undesignated fund balance the sum of $6,500 to refurbish the doors and replace the lock system at the Halifax Town Hall.
Okay, we have a second.
Second.
We have a second. Motion and a second for $6,500 to refurbish the doors. Mr. Elliott, it's your article.
Thank you. This is the first phase in the security upgrade of the town hall by installing two electronic mechanisms at the parking lot side door. The wiring for electronic reader and software program for the fobs which will eliminate the key will limit time and access to the building after hours and on weekends. It will allow the present handicapped controls and openers to be interfaced with the new controls.
Okay, thank you. Finance Committee's recommendation.
Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee recommends. Any discussion on Article 39 as presented? Seeing no evidence thereof, all those in favor of Article 39, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously.
48.
Article 38.
48.
I'm sorry, 48.
48.
Article 48. Okay. Article 48 is proposed by the Board of Selectmen, I believe.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town approve Article 48 as printed in the warrant.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve Article 48, which amends the zoning of Halifax. Mrs. Roy, do you want to speak to the article?
I would. This article will designate where in Halifax a recreational marijuana shop can be allowed. Current Massachusetts law regulates that you must allow a medical marijuana facility, and when we in Halifax designated, that that would be allowed in an industrial zone property. This article will mimic the same stipulation for recreational marijuana. A special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals will also be necessary.
Okay, we need a planning board recommendation because this is a zoning change. Mr. Andrews.
Gordon Andrews, Chairman of the Planning Board. The Planning Board gives a recommendation.
The recommendation was?
They give the recommendation for this article.
You do recommend it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Finance Committee's recommendation, Mr. Andrews.
Finance Committee recommends as well.
Finance Committee recommends. Any discussion on Article 48 as presented? Article 48 is involving a zoning change, so it also requires a two-thirds vote. Moderator will try to hear a two-thirds vote. All those in favor of Article 48, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously.
Article 25.
Article 25. Article 25 is proposed by the Police Chief, Chief Rodrick.
Oh. Mr. Moderator, I moved at the town vote to transfer from undesignated fund balance the sum of $8,000, and to transfer from Article 21, police vehicles of the annual town meeting of May 9, 2016, the sum of $8,000 for a total of $16,000 to purchase and equip with miscellaneous police equipment, two new ATVs to be used for patrol.
We have a second? We have a motion and a second to purchase some new ATVs for the police chief, or police department, sorry. Chief, do you want to speak to it?
I wish. Mr. Moderator, what we're doing is replacing the two quads that we have now. One of them hasn't been usable for a couple of years now because we've been stealing parts off it to make the other one run. They're both 14 or 15 years old, and just the nature of the beast, they get used hard when they are run. So it's time to replace them. As I said earlier, this gives me the opportunity to explain this plan that we're always talking about with the Cruisers. What's happened is because the town has had faith in us to do what we are doing, when we replace the two Cruisers every year, it allows us to trade in the older Cruisers. They don't go up for auction or sit around, they're actually being traded in. And we're getting anywhere from $5,000 or $6,000 to $10,000 or $11,000 for trade-ins. So because last year, we got a good trade-in for one of the cars that we got rid of, that in itself will fund one of these quads. So this plan that we've always talked about is coming to fruition, and it's, this is what we've always wanted to do with it. I've also been able to reduce the Cruiser maintenance budget the last couple of years by $1,000 each year, and possibly more in the future, as long as it keeps going the way it goes.
Okay, thank you. Finance Committee's recommendation, Article 25.
The Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee recommends. Any discussion on Article 25 as presented? Seeing no evidence thereof, all those in favor of Article 25, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously.
33.
Article 33. Municipal and School Building Committee, Article 33.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I moved the town vote to transfer from undesignated fund balance the sum of $7,000 to replace office lighting Phase 1 of 2 with LED fixtures in the town hall and wiring over the next two years.
We have a second? We have a motion and a second to transfer money for lights. Mr. Elliott.
Thank you, Mr. Maury. This is going to happen in the new wing of the first floor. These are the old ballasts and bulbs, not energy efficient. By updating to LEDs would be a cost savings. The bulbs would last anywhere from 50,000 to 80,000 hours. The light fixtures would have no ballast, time-saving in our maintenance. Thanks.
Okay, Finance Committee's recommendation.
The Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee recommends, Article 33. Any discussion on Article 33? Seeing no evidence thereof, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously.
13.
Article 13. Article 13 is proposed by the Board of Selectmen.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Garen.
I moved at the town vote to raise and appropriate $2,553 to fund the provisions of the collective bargaining agreement for fiscal year 2018 between the Police Chief, Edward Rodrick, and the Town of Halifax.
We have a second? We have a motion and a second. Was that $2,500 or $2,500?
Yes.
Okay. Do you want to speak to the article, Mr. Garen?
This is, as across the board, that we've tried to give 2% increases in pay, we gave the chief. This will mark the amount of money needed to complete his contract for the next year, 2018.
Okay, Finance Committee's recommendation.
The Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee recommends. Any discussion on Article 13 as presented? Seeing no evidence thereof, all those in favor of Article 13, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously.
45.
Article 45. Article 45.
Mr. Moderator, we don't have the proponent of this particular article here. So could you just give us a second?
So can you what?
The proponent of this particular article is not present, so we need to decide whether or not we're going to pass over it or not.
You kind of have to decide now.
Mr. Moderator, I move to pass over this article.
Okay, we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass over Article 45. Just a minute. Mrs. Roy, do you want to speak to that motion?
Mr. Springer was to be here this evening to present the article in order to accept Heron Road.
Okay. Finance Committee's recommendation on passing over.
The Finance Committee recommends.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Moderator, Peter Anis from Heron Road. I'd like to speak to the...
Could you move a little closer so we can all hear? That's better, thank you.
I'd like to speak to this article of addressing the acceptance of Heron Road even though they've passed it over. When the road is resurfaced, rebuilt, or newly constructed, it's the responsibility of the contractor to provide a smooth transition from the new surface to each driveway entrance, and to do so in an acceptable manner using good workmanship. This was not done on Heron Road. Where there's a sidewalk involved, the elevation of the sidewalk is depressed at each driveway entrance in order to provide a smooth transition. In the Town of Halifax, this is a precedent. Heron Road is a new four-lot subdivision with a sidewalk along one side of the road connecting the four lots to Cedar Lane. One of the four lots had a pre-existing home. The others are in new construction. Due to the layout of the lots, it was necessary to relocate the driveway of the existing home, which was accomplished and completed prior to the digging of the first cellar hall of the new homes. The locations of the four driveways are clearly depicted on the approved subdivision plan. When the contractor was in the process of completing the road and the sidewalk, he neglected to depress the sidewalk at the pre-existing home, leaving the entrance with an unacceptable, sharp, uncomfortable bump. The three new home driveways had the sidewalk depression correctly installed, giving them a smooth transition from the roadway to the driveway. This discrepancy was brought before the Planning Board in November of 2015, a year and a half ago. The developer was notified, and a mediocre attempt was made to rectify the error, still leaving the sidewalk at an elevated rough transition to the driveway. During recent discussions with the Planning Board, one member of the board spoke at length against correcting the error. He announced that he is an employee of the engineering firm that worked for the developer of the subdivision. He is clearly in conflict of interest in defending his employer's position and took no steps to recuse himself from the discussion. The current recommendation of the Planning Board is in violation of conflict of interest laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. I'd like to propose the following amendment to Article 45.
Well, we're dealing with a motion to pass over. That can't be amended. So they're being, town's being asked not to take any action on this, just to not vote on it, yes or no? That's where we are right now. That's the current motion. So if, as I hear your statement, you're not in favor of accepting the road, is that what you're trying to say?
That is correct.
Okay, so the motion to pass over now, it won't be accepted. It may come back at another time, but it won't be accepted tonight.
Okay.
Okay? Yes. Any other discussion on Article 45, the motion to pass over, meaning the town's being asked not to take any action? Seeing no evidence of any discussion, all those in favor of passing over, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is passed over.
12.
Article 12. It's proposed by the Board of Selectmen.
Mr. Moderator.
Mr. Garen.
I moved at the town vote to raise and appropriate $23,594 to fund the provisions of the collective bargaining agreement for fiscal year 2018 between the Halifax Association of Police Patrolmen and the Town of Halifax.
$15,594.
$23,594.
I'm sorry?
$23,594.
$23,594.
$23,400.
$594.
$594.
Everybody else heard it except me apparently, so we'll go with that. We have a second on that?
Second.
Yeah. You want to speak to your article?
As with the other...
Don't want me speaking to it because I can't get the numbers to you.
As with the other presentations for contracts, this is a contract that's been negotiated in good faith with the Police Association Patrolmen, and it... As with the other presentations for contracts, this is a contract that's been negotiated in good faith with the Police Association Patrolmen, and it represents a 2% across the board increase.
Okay, Finance Committee's recommendation, Article twelve.
The Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee recommends any discussion on Article twelve. Seeing, as proposed, seeing no evidence thereof, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously.
Forty-two.
Mr. Moderator, I move at the town vote to transfer from undesignated funds the balance sum of $3,500 to South Shore Women's Resource Center for Domestic Violence Intervention and Prevention Services for its residents.
Okay, we have a second? A motion and a second to transfer $3,500. Mr. Garen, do you want to speak to your article?
South Shore Women's Resource Center has worked with, over the years, I've had the opportunity to present this, they've worked with several people in the town, unfortunately, with the Domestic Violence and Intervention and Prevention Services, and has served the town well over the last few years.
Okay, Finance Committee's recommendation, Article forty-two.
The Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee recommends any discussion on Article forty-two. Seeing no evidence thereof, all those in favor of Article forty-two as proposed, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously.
Article eight.
Article eight. Is proposed by the Board of Selectmen.
Mr. Moderator, I move that the town vote to raise and appropriate $14,760 to fund the provisions of the collective bargaining agreement for fiscal year 2018 between IAFF Local 3159 firefighters in the Town of Halifax.
Okay, we have a second? We have a motion and a second to raise and appropriate $14,760. Mrs. Roy?
This article will fund the contract at 2% increase for the next fiscal year for the firefighters.
Finance Committee's recommendation, Article eight.
The Finance Committee recommends.
Finance Committee recommends any discussion on Article eight as proposed. Seeing no evidence thereof, all those in favor of Article eight, say aye.
Aye.
Motion, all those opposed, the article passes unanimously. That brings us to Article 51 and Mr. Garen's motion.
Mr. Moderator, I move that we adjourn to date certain, May thirteenth, from ten to six for town election officers.
Okay, we have a, we have a motion to adjourn to a time certain, that'd be Saturday, May thirteenth at ten o'clock, to take up Article 51. Do we have a second?
And we'll see you at the polls.
Mr. Moderator.
Yes, Mr. Andrews, you have something to say about that?
Are we going to discuss the ballot question as no longer?
Right. Just to clarify, the ballot question that's on the war, on the election ballot, has no bearing. It won't count. You can vote yes, you can vote no, it won't make any difference. The town meeting has already voted the appropriation not contingent on the ballot question, so just want people to understand that.
We still hold an election, though. There's plenty of things to vote for. All those in favor of motion to adjourn, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting is adjourned.